I'd like to call the meeting to honor for the Lumister Planning Board, September 16th, 2019. Our first hearing is 6:30. Public hearing for special permit approval for the water supply protection district for 909 Elm Street. May I represent it?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, give them a...
All right. Phil, I'm Chris Anderson with Hanning and Jerry here behalf of Manny and Norma Lieta for a special permit for work within the water supply protection district at 909 Elm Street. Just to orientate ourselves here, we have Elm Street that runs along the bottom of the page with the center of the city going towards the east. Currently, the property is previously developed in an existing single-family home, paved driveway, landscaped lawn areas, swimming pool and patios. The intent of the applicant to propose new impervious areas within this property. First area is going to be a new paved driveway to serve as a secondary means of access to the property. Currently, there is an existing driveway, but it's at a relatively steep grade, about 16 to 18 percent depending on where you are on it. And during the winter, that becomes, as you can imagine, pretty dangerous and kind of slippery. So it's the intent to construct the secondary means along the western property line. This grade will be at around 14 percent. Doesn't sound much until you're sliding down the driveway during the middle of the winter. So it just allows for a secondary access and makes the site a little bit easier to get in and out of. Because of this impervious area, we'll be proposing a two-foot wide stone swale along the downgraded portion of it. This will serve as a velocity mitigation factor to help reduce the runoff coming off this side of the hill. And it'll also have check dams to provide a longer travel time through the swale. The intent is that the soils, as part of the special permit, we have to make sure we can provide some kind of recharge capabilities. But the site is located on some relatively impervious soils, so recharge is not really a feasible method on this property. It's the intent that these check dams will just hold back the water just long enough to allow for some natural recharge into the groundwater. The secondary component of the project will be a new pool house and patio area to be constructed off the side of the existing pool area and whatnot. It's relatively innocuous side use. At the end of the day, there will be approximately an additional 2,643 square feet of impervious land cover, which when combined with the existing impervious land cover equates to about 12 percent of the overall property. Per zoning, per the ordinance, we're allowed 15 percent, so we're still well below that There are several encroachments onto the abutting property and the right-of-way easement that serves the city of Lumister to go towards the reservoir near the back of the property. As part of this construction, those encroachments will be removed in the area reloated and stabilized upon pollution construction. There are several areas of resource areas that are subject to the Water Protection Act. Currently, we just had a meeting with the Conservation Commission and we decided that the best course of action for this project was to issue actually an enforcement order. Because the work that was being performed within the riverfront area was previously disturbed and everything like that, it's the intent that we'll be working with the commission and the agent to reestablish this area and replant with appropriate plantings, trees and everything like that. So at the end of the day, the primary work component of everything is located out of the resource area. The only work we're doing with the commission specifically is the revegetation of this. So we have had an enforcement order issued to us last Tuesday and we're working with them concurrent with the special permit. Aside that, that's the general gist of the project. Any questions? I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Are they going to be used in both driveways?
Yes.
Okay.
One's like a winter driveway.
I'm just curious if they would. I mean, it doesn't make a difference here, but if I were to put a second egress in there for the driveway, I might have tried to flatten out a spot and put a place of pot there for the winter.
Down here? That would be within the riverfront area.
Right here, right between the two driveways.
It's an option, but it's not the guy who saw it.
Yeah, I know, I know that. I know.
Yeah, you can see the grade.
Yep.
What, do you have anything else to add?
We received department head comments and comments from the planning director. We provided a response to those comments.
Okay.
Type that. There's numbers to the project.
Okay, I'll open up the audience then. Do I have any questions from the audience, comments on this project? I'll ask a second time. Do I have any questions or comments concerning this project? Third and last time. Do I have any questions or comments concerning this project? Karen, no, no, turn to the board. Any questions on the board?
No, motion to close the hearing.
Do you want to read?
Oh, no. We'll do it when we open it for the vote, right?
No, go through those now.
Okay.
He addressed him, but if you want to put it directly.
Yeah, he goes through the record.
It wasn't how you said.
No, it wasn't. Primarily, it's the Conservation Commission. This is because they're dealing with soil compaction. They got their erosion control, I mean vegetation runoff. It's all because it's sensitive to the wetland losing and the water protection. So this is really, other than the driveway ourselves and any encroachment that we might have in that area...
You must have had to go through a transportation with that wall.
No, that was done without. That was done without...
That wall was done without. There was a number of things on that property that were done without permits. And so that's why they're redoing the, what he mentioned earlier, the encroach. Want to tell them about the encroachments that they had and what they did?
Yeah, so there's a stone boulder slope along the existing gravel drive. Parts of it have encroached into the abutting property, which is Lumister Land Trust and the reservoir in the back of 40. And there's a giant stone pile over here that's kind of falling over into it. So that area will be reestablished with honesty, grading brought back to its natural grade. And there's some encroachment over into the riverfront area right through here. Because it wasn't a natural feature there before, we're removing that out of the resource area and then just re-again, reseeding and stabilizing. This area, he did kind of push into it a little bit too much, so that's why you're seeing grading along this slope here. Just to cut back so that essentially the bottom or the toe of the slope will be hanging around that 200-foot riverfront area. And all the trees and scrub brush that he had taken out as part of this will be just reseeded and planted. We're talking with the commission, they might want to just do a wildlife seed mix, a couple shrubs, a couple white lines, something like that. It wasn't a really well-established vegetation area, but they still want to have something back there at the end of the day. So we'll be working with them and figuring out what the plants and everything like that look like.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say DPW.
What was the DPW?
DPW comment relative to the impervious area calculation. So that's been added to the plan and everything like that.
Oh, okay.
And...
Taking out the right-of-way easement.
Yeah, taking out the easement lines so that it goes in to go remove the encroachments every now and then.
And Lumister's the edge of reviewing the project style of this place.
Yeah. Okay, I think we're okay.
Building inspector said a building permit is required for the tour.
Right. I don't have anything else. I had a motion to close the hearing. So I have a motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. Thank you. The call to audit is a regular meeting.
Patrick Curley.
Here.
Chris Frederick.
Yep.
Paul Eizer.
Here.
Sal Torto Cuddy.
Here.
John Sussel.
Here.
Carol Torso.
Excused.
Thomas Kergman.
Yeah. Okay, minutes?
I think a motion to accept them.
Motion made and do I have a second on that?
Second.
To accept the minutes as presented. Any discussion, additions or deletions? You're a no, no, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Those minutes are so complete, they scare me.
That's supposed to be a transfer.
Excellent.
Very good. She put in that I sneezed.
Well, it's because you didn't cover your mouth.
You want to let the audience know what they've got to hear.
Yeah, and what I'm going to do at the 6:45, even though I got to wait for the 6:45. We have a member that had a death in their family. So therefore, the parties involved have were notified and it was asked if we continue the hearing to our next meeting, okay?
October 7th.
To the 7th. So we just found that out late this afternoon.
Thank you.
Okay, and so just to let you know what the rules and regulations are, because Carol isn't here, I cannot, I have to open the hearing as per law, and I can't accept any testimony or any input because as a voting member of one of the required voting members, she has to be here, okay? So just wanted to let you know, I'm going to be opening it and closing it, but I can't take any comments. I could take written and give it to, you know, to Elizabeth and that can be, you know, sent out to everybody if you want to write it, but that's all I could, all I could accept. Okay? I just want to let you know as soon as, you know, I click in my hand the program, so you're not stuck here longer than you have to. So, okay? Just to be honest with everybody.
Very much appreciate it. We weren't sure there's going to be any discussion because I'm not that familiar with the planning board's process.
Right.
We just wanted to be here in case there was, but if it's not going to be, thank you very much.
I believe this young lady might be here for the same hearing.
Okay. So are you here for Willet Street?
I am.
Oh, okay.
How are you?
I just explained to them is that because one of our members has had a death in the family, one of the voting members, we can't accept any testimony tonight.
Okay.
I have, by law, I open it and then we close it, okay? And if you have something written, we can accept that.
I do.
But that's all.
I do.
So if you've got something written, when I open it, you can give it to Elizabeth and we send that out to everybody, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to, that will be at four minutes. So let's go to the first A and R on Lancaster Street.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Do the A and R first, just to hear this?
Yeah, that's what I said, we'll do it on the air.
Sounds like.
A and R approval for 187 Lancaster Street, map 165 lot 12, and 191 Lancaster Street, map 165 lot 12A.
Tom David LaRoya from the Kansas City District.
Yeah, he's here.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry.
Six Street, right across from Six Street. Yeah, it looks like it.
It is the flower shop.
The old flower shop, okay.
Yes. So where are we going? The properties were two properties, both owned by the Dematha family. And there's two buildings on one parcel and one building on another parcel. We're creating lots for each of the buildings as well as an additional lot.
Lot three, with frontage.
They all have...
It's 20 feet substantial frontage.
It is, and...
Commercial district.
Commercial?
Yeah. These are...
If you look at my memo, I put the minimum frontage in it.
Okay. I didn't realize it was commercial there.
Five thousand square feet for a lot.
Yes.
Existing 5,300, 57, 61.
Enough food, and just still clients.
Yeah.
Motion to endorse.
Motion made and seconded, don't tell us. All in favor, say aye. All say no? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, go back to our 6:45 hearing. Continued public hearing for definitive subdivision approved for the metal lands at Willet Street along the larger side of Willet Street, including 671 Willet Street. I have to make the official announcement that we don't, because of personal circumstances of our voting member, that we will not be taking any information on this unless it's written. And it will be continued to the 7th at 6:30. 7th at 6:30.
So if they're in...
Make a motion.
Red motion is made for October 7th at 6:30. Do we have any discussion on the time? You're a no, no, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. Okay, just to let everybody know, we have received a letter or a package. Patrick, Berwick. I can't spell it like that.
Birdwinkle.
What's that?
Birdwinkle.
Yeah, Birdwinkle.
Oh, Michaela.
Yeah, Michaela, I guess that's Michaela. So this will be acted on this evening and will be submitted for further, for the meeting on this 7th. Okay? But we can read it on our own and...
Discuss.
Okay, make sure Carol gets a copy. Okay, I'll go to 3.2. Oh, I made the motion to vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. Okay, 3.2, A and R approval for 192 Hamilton Street, map 236.
Good evening. I see Val and Whitman Digum. This is on Hamilton Street. 192 presently, I think, Airport Diner from Pittsburgh for that.
Yep, 192.
192 is simple, huh?
Yes. They sold it, it was.
Oh, they sold it to the diner?
No, to, well, it's an emergency trust.
Morrissey. Redline?
Oh, Redline.
Yeah. So they said the diner had one for two lots.
Wait a minute, is he going to have enough parking?
For the rest?
For the diner? Yeah.
All this parking in the front, parking...
B1 is the diner?
No, B2.
B1 is the diner?
Yeah.
Okay, and you've got some, because you've got the diner in there.
Six spots in here.
You've got the, yeah, but, you know, would he be non-conforming then? Because it's only 26 feet here. That's enough for parking along here, but he wouldn't all oil with it. Right.
We'll have parking very tight. Is that paved with vinyl?
Part of it, part of it.
That's crumbly stuff, yeah.
It's paved to...
Paved above 17. Where it says 17, it's above paved. The rest of it, it's really, really gross back there.
How many spots we have? Anybody know?
What's the size?
I don't know.
And how many seats do they have?
I don't know.
Forty, fifty people.
I don't know if it's staying even.
Oh, really?
I don't.
Well, that's a different issue, but that's...
Right.
We tried to...
Yeah, but they make it a non-conforming lot.
Well, the frontage is fine.
Well, right, for A and R, it's fine, but it doesn't, no, I understand what you're...
But he's also got the computer place in there.
Yes.
It's not only the diner, but there's the computer.
On the other side, you can do the side.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably a split.
We didn't do a site plan currently at the plant.
We haven't had a site plan on that in years.
Right.
It's because college.
I mean, that would be my only problem because, you know, people are still going to be parking over there.
Yeah.
Not people who are building it.
Well, it's true.
But for the purpose of what we're doing tonight.
Right, on Redline. Building it.
Well, yeah, but the whole thing is if you make it non-conforming to the restaurant and computer business by splitting the lot, it's what we should be doing.
It's not a big restaurant.
No.
No, but, no, you're right.
It's got one, two, three, four booths, couple tables and...
It might need 15 or 20 spots there.
Might need 20, yeah, I'd say.
At least 20.
Six in front.
Because you can't make it a non-conforming, because you have an non-conforming business.
He's got 10 in the front and on the side, he won't have enough to get by and park.
I think that was why, well, partly because movement over the access, they want to put this access and ease it to come in to get in.
And all the 20-foot strip.
So they'll still be parked in here.
So they use the 20-foot strip.
If they make this a non-conforming, they strip the park and they're going to have to take some of the square footage off lot B2. We'll get rid of the house, man.
Is that off of that or is that part of it?
It's one lot now, right?
Is this number...
This easement will be for them.
Okay.
But it's on this number.
Correct. Yes. It's on B2, but it'll be for the benefit of B1.
And that's all.
Or what?
Yes, the utilities, but it's really parking.
Well, it's an access and utility.
Right.
So they'll come in from Hamilton and then go into a parking space.
It's not going to be wide open in front of it?
I think there's plenty behind it. There's pavement.
Yeah, the pavement goes about in the back. I'd say if they give 71 feet, if he goes back 30 feet, that leaves, right. Oh, the lot goes way back here.
No, no, but I mean the pavement comes through here.
But that's only B2, right?
Yeah.
That's probably, I mean, that's a squeeze. I'm saying seats are on it, but the pavement goes just up for that.
Right to here.
What is a restaurant?
To the C1.
What is it?
What is a restaurant with say 50 seats required?
I'll look that up. But that's not something that you can base your decision for an A and R one.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah. I'll tell you. I can type it up.
You can use it.
Yes, we can, because you create a non-conforming situation.
So that would mean that the non-conforming, you can create, remember what we read out of the playbook?
But they're going to give you a site plan.
Well, and I added a note down under where Elizabeth will sign.
The conservation plans were...
That means they can't get any building permits, they can't do anything until they come into compliance.
Right, right.
So the...
Per the ordinance, it conforms for the zone for frontage and area.
That's okay.
But they'll have to come back.
Yeah, if they want to put a building there, come back.
Right. And if they change anything, which I know they have something planned, but I don't think they, they obviously have it before, but I think they're in the process.
Parking for a restaurant is one, it's not, it's one per every 100 square feet of gross floor area excluding basement storage.
Motion to endorse.
Yeah, set to that.
I have a motion to endorse by Tom Second and by Sal. Any further discussion? You're a no, no, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. A and R approval for 63 Westland Avenue.
And there were amendments, just so you know, made it to this plan after I wrote my review memo to address my comments. So the plan you're looking at is the revised plan.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to pass it out?
Yes, I'm just giving you one.
Thank you.
You go right now. Me again.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you come up...
Off of Main, off of North Main.
Yeah.
On the left-hand side going up.
Run's power.
Up to Hill.
Western goes up the hill toward the 2 where the old Lumister beverage was, the mad area.
Yeah. Okay.
The only thing is I had asked that, and maybe I'm missing it, would that the zoning be put one across from...
With lines?
Okay.
It runs right on the sideline.
I just didn't see it.
It runs, the zoning runs right on the sideline.
Okay.
Yes, one of tubes for one lot and there's...
What's the zoning name there?
It is Residence B.
Residence B.
Potato Buds, the commercial.
Potato Buds, the commercial, the south line of Princeton.
Okay, I see it.
So what do we need this square footage?
No, 10,000.
Yeah, 10,000.
Motion made and seconded to endorse. Any further discussion? You're a no, no, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Metal lands has been continued. Okay, new business, 5.1. Special permit approval for water supply protection district, 909 Elm Street. Discussion of...
I think we've pretty much discussed the motion to approve, what's set out in the hand for us.
And conditions that they...
Conditions, car.
That, oh, conditions, yeah. Yeah, they did.
I thought it was going on, my son was building his house and he kept going, "That's a big wall." In the area, no, we can do that. A lot of stuff.
That is a super driveway.
Oh, yes. It's much better than the...
Yeah, so that's what's happening, so. It's happening, you know, we've seen that up in the boon docks and these places, these people build these things and we have no idea that they're out there, just like we had that thing up in...
Oh, my.
Elm Street now is more, getting more and more, but it used to be...
It's been quiet up there.
Used to be quiet, huh? It wasn't.
It's prepping for you guys. Very little at Richards Kim.
Yeah. So basically Sal's motion was to accept the plan with, specifically with the conditions of the Conservation Commission.
And for the...
And other departments. Any further discussion on that? Any further discussion on that? Okay, here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Communications, two seven five, New Lancaster Road, site plan, conditional approval, follow-up, peer review for traffic. And...
Are you here for two seventy-five?
Yes.
Okay. Basically, the question is, do we, does the board require a peer review for this or not?
Two seventy-five is Riant.
Off the new origin here.
Okay, and so, so what we had, we had asked for was that after a certain period of time, traffic, and also the, the city traffic engineer has also requested a peer review. And so we're trying to follow up with that. The, there's been some contention on whether it's really required or not. So I think we wanted to bring this forward to make it the decision on whether we wanted to have...
Is that other, do we have the updated timing adjustments that are referenced in this email?
Yeah, they're parking, yeah.
Yeah.
And you're directly accessible from the...
Yes.
That right exit? You're getting that tonight?
Cross-exit, or is that was closed before?
Yeah, that's their primary exit. The exit at Lowe's is their primary exit.
The cross from Lowe's.
That's right, the cross from Lowe's.
That's where Lowe's goes right before...
Yes and no.
The planning board didn't specifically state that a peer review would be required, it's...
I'm just curious, it speaks about updated timing charts, because they're gonna make adjustments to the, to the lights, which is fabulous, because they're horrible.
But the wire inspector suggested a peer review, yeah.
So what's wrong with that? Nothing.
And what that requires is that escrow money be collected from the applicant and to pay for the cost of the study. So that's, that's what that would involve, so it would be a cost involved.
I'll allow you to speak.
Are you Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Mike, you heard, like you recall, I was here two years ago, two and a half years ago, and we permitted this. So just to go back in time, so this goes back to when New England Development did the whole, you know, development, and there was some conditions within their approval about doing traffic studies after full occupancy, and Riant got saddled with that essentially, you know, after New England Development basically disappears from the whole process. We come back in to do the last little piece, Riant, a group of kind of Walmart, the Aldi, the Tractor Supply, Riant comes in as the last piece. We get, we get, we get a condition to do, you know, a certain amount of counts after full occupancy, six months after full occupancy, and come forward with recommendations with respect to signal retiming after the fact. So trying to be a good, you know, to be honest, a lot of folks would just forget about this, right? Would never have completed the condition, have never satisfied the requirements. Riant tried to be a good neighbor, comes forward, does the counts, prepares a signal timing, sends it in, most people would have forgotten about it, but we tried to be good assistance, we sent it across, and the way we read the condition was prepare the retiming recommendations and coordinate. There was no pay-for, pay-for, peer review, there was actually no even pay for the actual implementation of the recommendations. It's provide the recommendations and submit them and coordinate, which is what we have done.
Well, he's done a concrete review.
Yeah, so in Riant's standpoint, we've completed what we've, the condition that was applied by the board, the project's been wrapped up, the budget's closed out, there's no money to be available to fund a peer review, nor, nor to fund additional implication, Riant, you know, to do the retiming work. So, you know, we, we believe that we've satisfied the condition, tried to be good neighbors and get this done, and we believe that our, our obligations are complete at this point. And so I understand whether the, the wiring inspector wants a peer review or not, we're not here to argue whether that's a good idea or not a good idea. We're just saying we've, we've satisfied the requirements of what was placed on us with the condition, and we shouldn't be held to any further, you know, to act further upon this. So that's where really our, it's not a debate of whether peer review is required or not, it's just we think we're done, and we think we've been a good, you know, a good neighbor and have done what the board asked us to do, and, and are ready to just move on. So that's where we stand.
I, I think, and I'm trying to, I did have a discussion with the, the wiring inspector. I guess one of the issues is the, the timing of the lights. And the, the way it is now is that the, I'm going from memory now, that the priority was on your light.
It could be, McMahon's, McMahon prepared a report, there are some recommendations on how to adjust it and what, what could be done to, it didn't sound like there are major adjustments to do.
No, and it's not, it's, and I think part of the thing was there has to be some retiming there, okay? Because what was happening, as he explained it to me, was for some reason, the way it was set up in US signaling, is that the priority was coming out of Riant. So when you had a car coming out of there, there was one car, it stopped the traffic on one seventeen, okay? Versus one seventeen having the priority, and a certain sequence of time, as he explained to me, is the sequence is three hundred and sixty seconds. So there's a sequence in the three hundred and sixty seconds, is it so much for this light, road, this one, and turning off, you know, that, so that has, that has to be redone. And that's where we got committed to the, the peer review, is that timing, because now is, is causing a problem, okay, in that area. And if we didn't have Riant, we wouldn't have the problem. So, so, you know, it's, it's, it's one of these things I, you're getting stuck with now. Elizabeth says, did we have some money in escrow?
We have zero in escrow.
Yes, there was...
We'd have to collect it, we'd have to...
We would have to collect it, so...
We didn't change the timing on those lights, when we, when we just activated the circuit.
I agree, no, no, I'm not, I'm not saying you, I didn't, I didn't say you, the way, whoever set it up originally...
Yeah.
Okay? I don't know who that was, did that, and I think it was because of New England Development, they had priority in this whole thing. So they set it up for their own priorities. They did the same thing, which we had to change, over at Walmart, they had the priorities to the access to Walmart. So those are some of the things that we caught later that we didn't catch upfront, and it was done in the timeframe between that, like, you're the last guy on the leg, you know, so you sort of get stuck, okay? So the, the city is looking for, basically, for help, and we're saying, we don't have any money for it, we have a problem, that the timing is not correct, and it doesn't give a good flow for that area. The cause and effect is that Riant is there today. Now, why it was set up that way, we have no idea, but it is. So our question is, is through either a peer review or through a minor, some kind of engineering negotiation with the wiring inspector, they come up with a method of, I'm not saying you have to do a full-blown thing, just how do we re-time these things so we get the flows done properly? That's what my goal is.
Did they send the recommendations?
Yeah.
He hasn't got that, no, he doesn't have those, he, he's...
Who doesn't have that?
Yeah, so McMahon submitted a report with the signal timing recommendations of what, it's not a re-phasing, so the phasing, like, red, green, right turn stays the same. They just recommended some adjustments in the signal timing, so when a, when a leg gets tripped, somebody's waiting, shorter or length...
So you've already done that.
That, that's been completed, that's what we were asked to do, per the condition from this board, and we've submitted that, and that's been completed.
Why don't we take that again and go back and, you know...
'Cause it's just, and peer review is our employees.
No, it's...
Peer review and outside...
I already checked with DPW, and they said they're not, they don't have the expertise on stuff to do that type of review. And either does the wire inspector.
Isn't this, isn't this the same aisle?
No.
No. There's this new light, yeah.
It's, 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 it's further up. Yeah, man, you're in the neighborhood.
And I go through it every day, and it's a major, it's been a problem from day one, I'm not saying it's your fault, but, but certainly...
Day one of Riant, or day one of the whole project?
Yeah, Blenner. It is New England Development.
But I, and I'm not, I'm not blaming you for it, but I will say that because the lights are so, you can't get three cars out there before it changes, then you wait for five minutes to go through it, and so people go through the development, and they cut through Walmart, bring more traffic out of the street, and then it backs up and, and blocks access to two roads, 'cause people are coming out of the Walmart area, coming down the street, they meet together, it's a bad safety issue, it's a major traffic problem, and bottom line, there's no other way for us to address it, other than saying now is the time, once we've got full occupancy in this thing, to say now is the time to go and take a look at it. And while I appreciate your predicament, saying that you, complying with the rules you're required to comply with is not something you get extra credit for, that's, that's what you're supposed to do. So coming in and saying, you know, we're great, we didn't have to do it, a lot of people forgot it, that, that runs me the wrong way a little, but you had to do it.
We did, and we did.
And you did, and I respect that, but, you know, you don't, you don't get...
But there's also, there was all, I mean, just to be fair, I mean, there was a, there's a, there's a condition within the board's approval from two thousand and three for National Development to go out and do these counts and take care of this, and nobody holds their feet to the fire.
I, we should've, I, I agree.
They're gone.
They're not, I mean, they are gone, but they're still, I mean, still there, a condition, Walmart's still there, just as much as Riant's there.
Right, but they still lease everything. They're still the mother corporation, right?
That leased property to New England?
Yeah, I have no idea.
Well, is Riant leasing?
No, Riant's just there to get along.
So I wonder if the rest are leasing for...
And I appreciate, and I sympathize with your situation, but I don't think it's, and, you know, I mean, there's, there's other factors here that need to be considered, and, you know, Riant, when we came to this board initially, was a nonprofit organization, there was no intent to pay real estate taxes. Riant has since converted to a for-profit organization, now pays real estate taxes into the coffers at Webster. So, I mean, it's not like, it's not like there, there aren't funds flowing out of this, it could be, I know there's blaster issues, and I, I can't...
Hey, when I say my doctor, when I go over there, pay for this light.
Right, but now they also do pay into the coffers at Webster. There's a reciprocal, you know, funds coming into the city now.
Which one are we talking about?
Well, that's, I don't know.
I don't know.
Thousands or...
No, I don't think so.
Well, I mean, you are...
Elizabeth, so there's a peer review, but then there's, so what happens with, okay, we peer review it, so now we gotta make a change.
It's an hourly rate, we collect five thousand dollars upfront, and then if it's not all used, if it isn't used, they, the amount that excess is refunded.
Is that for the traffic study or peer review, as well as implementation of the peer review? You know, timings, signal timing, people, are people doing the same with them?
Um, you know, I have a contract, I can forward it to the board, I got a quote from Green Affiliates International to do the peer review, and they, they gave us the scope and what they would do. I have to take another look at that, I can go get it.
Who actually does the... Let's say we do all of this.
Who changes the timing of the lights?
I think, I think that Joe Koyer...
Joe Koyer.
Joe, once he's told, so, what to do, right? Joe can do the wiring, can do it.
But that's not a cost.
But trying to get, you know, hey, maybe we gotta have a...
Where is this light we're talking about?
It's one of those. The one at Lowe's.
The one across from Roadhouse.
Also the one going across from...
That's where people cost, isn't it?
Yeah, well, see, this is not, see, I realize, that's, see, that's our problem.
Fix the first one you know.
See, we're, we're talking about that one road at, at every light.
As am I, because, because that timing is so bad, it forces people through the development.
There's been a lot of people on Noble Road, I'll tell you that much.
And that...
And it's really, it's really, we have a real problem, okay?
And the customer...
I appreciate that, I'm not arguing that, I'm just, I'm arguing that, you know, as the last ones through, we've met our obligations as outlined by the board, and the project's closed out, and the budget's closed, and so it's just similar to like what you guys do with the municipal budget, like, when the project gets closed, and then come back and say, okay, wait, we, we need more money to keep doing X, Y, and Z, well, there's no, there's no funds avail, I mean, I don't know how else to say it, there's no funds available from, from the project to continue the work. We executed a contract with...
I'd like to, I'd like to continue this, okay?
Can we?
For what purpose?
And I'd like to see, make some contact with New England Development.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, 'cause they was responsible...
'Cause they're ultimately responsible for this. And, and let's see if, what our status is with New England Development.
I could give you a guess.
But it's a shot, okay? We might try it and, and say, hey, this is part of your, your total package. I don't know whether we'd be successful or not.
Do you have the copy of what New England Development was supposed to do? Is there an extra copy, or can we get the copy?
I don't know.
This is, this is...
If they sold everything off, then, then we got nothing.
They leased.
But if they're leasing Walmart, and Lowe's, and some of those others, then they still have some, they still have responsibility.
I mean, that's what they do. I don't think Walmart owns that. I don't think Walmart owns it.
I don't think they do, too.
I wouldn't do it.
So my guess is...
Do you have a check of five grand tonight?
So why don't we see if we can chase back to New England Development and make some contact with them?
'Cause if you can look at the...
And see if we can lean on it.
If you can look at the light at Walmart that they own, then you can figure out what's wrong and how to do it, then you can fix their light, and it would work.
Fix it all.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if you get New England Development to pay for it...
Hey, it's not a defensive lane, at least people can get through, and it's ten times the traffic.
Maybe we gotta, we might have to do an off meeting, you know, outside of the board meeting with, with these folks, Joe, and if we can get a representative of, of...
Can I have your card?
Of Mass Highway.
Well, plus, let's try to look at...
And Mass Highway and New England Development. Yeah, let's see if we get the players together.
Well, let's see if we can get New England Development to own up to paying the money, because it's part of the conditions for the overall approval for the whole project.
If we have, no.
And then if we can, then everything else is new, right?
But everything with New England Development is done.
I don't know, that's what, we don't know, we don't have the answer.
Well, I'm gonna bet, most of this leased.
I bet the ass that can tell us.
Yeah, I'd bet.
Okay, okay, what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna continue this, okay, then take a vote, because this is actions, you know?
Yeah, and just so you know, I've only, I've been here not quite a year yet, and as part of my procedures, I will be going through and making sure that developers have met their conditions of approval, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be a process.
Yeah, we're not afraid to be held accountable for the conditions that are applied, we just want it to be applied fairly.
Yeah, and all we're asking.
Yes, no, no, I don't disagree with you.
I agree.
We all know there's a problem there, okay? We all know that, you know, being the last leg on the horse, okay, to stand up, that's, that's one of, you know, we've got somebody that we can look at, you know, and if I can go back on New England Development, 'cause they're the originators, and if it's still feasible, yeah, I'd rather have them own up to it and say, hey, this has gotta be done. I don't know what, how, where I could stand on that, whether, what good I get.
It's a long time, I have no idea.
'Cause we didn't, see, whatever we had for bonds at the time, you know, had been released.
But if it's part of the conditions, it hasn't been met.
Twenty years, yeah. You see, there was a condition, I can remember there was a condition, and I thought we were still holding a bond for, and it may have been released, and I don't remember, because there was supposed to be a bond on Willard Street, that if the traffic exceeded a certain level, that they were gonna be responsible for redoing Willard Street.
There's a bunch of stuff in there.
And there, and there was a condition there, so...
So we had to...
I might remember, honestly.
Yeah, well, we get all, we get the, the original conditions, and we do got it right there, so, you know, some of those were there, I'm going from memory, it was a long time ago.
Guys in the ring are gonna call me up.
What you doing to me?
Also carry a lot more, right?
What you doing to me?
But, and what exacerbates it is the state doesn't help us either, because the state puts a primary requirement on the two on-off lights for one ninety. So they really don't care, so they've got, in their case, they got the primary on one ninety rather than one seventeen. So that's... So that's what you run into also, because you can't make it through those two lights either. And so...
It needs to be coordinated.
Something that's got to be coordinated. So that's why I say, go to Mass Highway and say, hey, come on, guys, help us out here, let's see if there's something we can do. And I'm willing to try to take that on and meet with them and see what we can do.
All right.
So, very good.
All right, continue.
We'll work on it, okay? We'll keep you posted, you got his information, and, I don't know, yeah.
Well, let's figure out when we're gonna...
Yeah.
We'll get back to it.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Take care, guys.
All right, some of the states.
Okay, next one, status of some of the states. Did everybody get the, I thought, did everybody get the letter from us?
I got the letter, wait.
Oh, hi.
A legal opinion for KP Law.
Well, some of the states have been moved...
Can we get the gentleman from the post office is here? Can we possibly do this?
Sure, post office, yeah, we can do that.
Thank you for coming, postmaster.
Thank you for having me here, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chatperson, executive board, Ms. Wood.
I'm Ms. Wood.
Okay.
This is Chair Susa.
I'm John.
Hey.
How are you?
Very good.
Very good, so I'm here to answer any question that you may have concerning the mailbox development for all of the new developments, features. And I believe that I made several copies for your department, so you can give it to the builders.
Yep.
And I also have the guideline, and I think I made a couple of copies as well.
I gave everyone in the board.
Okay, awesome. If you have any kind of questions, I'm here to answer.
Well, I think, this is new. I've been on the board, Sal's been actually longer than me, around thirty years.
Thirty-one and a half, but not calling.
Oh, okay.
And this is the first time the post office has ever said anything to us that there was an issue, okay? And so, so thank you for bringing the information up, okay? And what we can do is, we have what we call subdivision regulations. So evidently in the past, as I understand it, it's been pretty much left up to the post office department and developers. But I guess that the developers were sort of doing things on their own.
They never came in to you, for example, till...
Exactly. Okay, and they wouldn't come to you, so what we can do, okay? And we have to write it up, and it would take some time, so I want to get your input, is that one of the things that we can do, in the subdivision regulations, we can add, saying, prior to final construction or occupancy of any homes, okay, in the subdivision, you must, the post office department must be contacted, and their rules and regulations adhere to. I'm not exactly sure if that would be the wording, but something similar to that.
I very much appreciate it.
Okay, and then they would have that in the subdivision regulations. So that when they're reading it, they'll know, oh, before I finish this, okay, prior to the first house being built, I have to take and go to the, you know, I have to work with the post office. Now, as far as your regulations on having centralized and some rural route, I'd like to, some of the discussion, I don't know where that all comes from. And some subdivisions, like we're looking at one here, it's 24 homes, okay, 27 homes? That might work, okay?
Yes.
We have another one that was proposed to us years ago, and it's in abeyance right now. That was 280 homes, that would not work. In that case, they would have to be maybe centralized in multiple locations, okay? So those are the things that I'd like to understand a little bit better. So that's why I was saying is, we're open to adding something to the subdivision regulations, but I want to add something correctly.
Well, that's why we need your input, because there'll still be rural delivery, right? And then we're talking, when it comes to clusters of homes or developments, to kind of centralize them like you would for a condo development. Is that how you're looking at it?
Yeah, that's how the postal service has been looking at that in the past five, five to six, five years or so in particular.
Yeah.
We are really pushing hard on central delivery units, like you mentioned, Mr. Chair. That, yeah, that you mentioned about if it's a 280 unit, that might not work in one location. It might be on multiple locations. There are several, there's several developments in City of Lummester that's already having that. You know, if you go around Central Street, just for example, in Brooklyn Apartments, okay, they already have, each they have their own mailroom on each building. So no resident's gonna have to be bothered going out of the other street corner to pick up their mail.
Right.
Versus you have the other unit right across the street, I'm trying to remember, right before...
Almost a thousand.
Alfonso, what, Alcambino, there's a...
Alcambino, oh, yeah, yeah.
Chapman Place, they actually have multiple destination for customers to pick up their mail, so they don't have to travel far.
Right.
So we are strategically helping the builders and developers, you know, work with them to make sure it suits the needs of the customers, you know, citizens, as well as the builders and your code as well. But the only other issue that I have, I was here for ten years now, I became postmaster of Lummester, 2009, and this is my tenth year, and I only had really two issues with two separate builders, which they claimed, that they had spoken with the planning board, they have got all the approval, it's too late now, you know, water under the dam, we already put up all the mailboxes individually for 100 housing, you know, whatever that is, it's too late to put them down now. So that make my job so much harder when I'm trying to explain to the postal act board and say, listen, I don't know what happened here, there's this builder decided that, you know, hurricane's up too snarly, don't have to come to us. And then Lummester is really, you know, is a very, very exceptional, you know, one of the few communities that really, most of the builders are very cooperative. They will talk to us and say, hey, you know, what can we do here, what can we put the mailboxes, and what type of mailboxes, and things like that. But nationwide, because of the growth, a lot of builders are starting to just do it on their own, getting the easiest way out, the cheapest way out, is to throw every household a $20 mailbox and call it a day. One of the, one of the benefits of having a central box unit, you know, called a concentrated box unit, is security. The way we look at it right now is rampant, rampant on mail fact, on fact. It doesn't matter, Amazon's delivering it, FedEx delivering it, postal service delivering, it doesn't matter. People come into your house and steal packages.
Well, it's still, you're not gonna be able to put packages in the box.
Well, we do, we do in some way. Here's what we can do, on the CPU, what we call centralized box unit, there's actually parcel lockers comes with it, they have big unit and they have medium-sized unit. So for a regular shoebox size or anything, double shoebox size, it will fit in those parcel lockers. And the person that gets the package will get the key in your mailbox. So when you open your mailbox, you take the key out, it's a, oh, locker one. So you go open locker one, and there's your package.
Yep.
That's number one, the other one is identity theft. With this unit, it's 100% secure. We, the only person who can open the box is us. We open the centralized box, open it all up, put everybody's mail in it, lock it back up. Every household have their own set of keys. They are the only one that can open the box and take the mail out. It takes away the identity theft, and this is huge these days.
Yeah.
So it's not only benefiting the postal service per se, because it's more, 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 it's much cheaper, more efficient way to make a mail delivery, to keep the postage lower, but at the same time, it's also thinking of the residents as well. Now, you think about this, I myself am an example, I'm a postmaster. I actually have one of those boxes at the end of the street, which I could not see. So mailman drove by, drove up, opened the mail, well, and put the mail in there. Now, I have no security over that, all right? And plus, on the winter time, if it's inclement weathers, if I need go out there and pile out the little paths or the, to the, to the carrier can come and put the mail in there, I most frequently may not even see a mail because of the snow condition. But in here, because of the one unit, it's much easier to maintain it for the builders, you know, or for the residents themselves, so it's long, it does a multiple benefit doing that. And the most final one is postage. 55 cents, some people say, wow, that's a lot of money, you know? But you know what, the 55 cents can get you over to California for the recall. So if you, if you got a customer, got relatives from, let's just say, Canada, they use, you know, Royal Post, ask them how much they pay for a piece of leather coming here. Okay, never mind the Europe. So that's all the way, we're trying to help with the builders, but we just want the builder to call us first and say, hey, Mr. Hui, you're building up on 275 Am Street, I have a nine-unit condo, can we meet? Absolutely, we go out there and do a site survey, we give them catalogs, so they can order the boxes. Those boxes good for ten, twenty, twenty-five years, one-time investment, it's a, what we call, economically, we call it a fixed cost.
Do you sell those units?
We don't.
You don't?
Federal government cannot be, cannot be... Actually, I will give you, like, if you're the builder, you can have, like, your partners, I'll give you three catalogs. It's like, it's like making a bid, getting, you know, chance to send a bid out. You want to get the three bids, and then you compare the bids. So I will give you three catalog and three different companies. So you go pick and choose, you think, hey, this is $1,600 for a unit, 15, 50, say $50, that's fine. You know, that's how we do it.
But we should make you choose, not us choose, as to which ones the developers use.
Yeah, I mean, no, no, but all the catalogs...
No, 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 what, Sal, what I'm, all I'm gonna want to do is, in the subdivision regulations, put a requirement that they work with, they must be US post office, and must contact them. So in other words, that would direct the developer, and that's all we have to do.
Exactly.
But as you mentioned, a developer, there isn't, I have never seen one drawing that showed a post office box. I've never had one developer, ever say, ever heard about a post office.
Thirteen years, I've never seen one.
They actually didn't realize that if you are the homeowner, you're obligated to give your, if you're landlord, you're obligated to provide a resident a mail receptacle that can receive mail. So a lot of people don't even realize that. So really, it doesn't matter, you're developer, you're builder, you're homeowner.
Right.
If you sell a nine-condo unit, it's your obligation, you know, nine-way receptacles. The cheapest way for them to do is to throw a $20 mailbox out there and call it a day. You know, and be done with it.
Well, but, you know, we had, I don't know, we got us, it was rural, and it had to be a certain height, you had to check. Went online to check what the height of the, of the mailbox had, and if it wasn't that height, they didn't have to deliver. I don't even think developers put mailboxes up. When you buy houses, you put your own mailbox up.
Well, see, that's, that's the...
We had to make a requirement.
Right, that's the cloudy part of it, that's the cloudy part of it.
Just because they put it up doesn't mean it should...
That's right.
I know, I'm not, I'm not asking the builder to pay for anything. What I'm saying is, have them to work with us, right, so I can do our job.
Well, they're probably gonna have to pay for the centralized one.
They would have to.
Unless they split it up through the...
Look, if they're gonna, if they're gonna put one unit up there, like they say, for Easy Map, $1,600.
Yeah.
If they have 16 units, the chances are they're gonna, they're gonna spread it back, send it back to the consumers, right?
Now, you're probably gonna put a pad and you gotta...
Well, see, that's another thing, too. We even, we even helping to do that, you know, we have what you call a specification, I'm sure that you've heard of all the specs, I mean, you guys, that's what you do for a living. So we have our own specs in terms of the thickness of the pad and everything else. So there are some private homeowner, they pull up a unit of CPU and they call me, hey, Rich, you know, on the second, second, second street, second half. We have six, six units, I want to buy a six-unit one. So he came in, picked out the catalog, they ordered one. I send the workers up in Boston and call the cement for them. I can even do that.
And the US Postal Service paid for that?
I, and I will send it up to Boston, and tell the Boston, Boston, you know, get up to Lummester.
All we have to do is put it in the subdivision regulations.
But all I'm asking you folks to help me out is just...
No, we don't have any problem. You brought it, you brought it forward to us, we were unaware that there was an issue, okay? And like you said, it's only come up in the last five or six years that they've been really pushing it, so we accept that. I think we're doing pretty good for only five years behind.
Well, Lummester's not the major, major, you know, store point, so it's...
And I love the ideas around the security, and it's all good.
So I'll draft something up that we can language, and you can tweak it as much as you want, as to what to put into subdivision regulations, to the fact that the developer must contact the post office upon...
Right. They don't have to, I contacted them at the first stage. As long as they contacted us before they decided where to put the mailbox and what type of mailboxes, and mail receptacle to use. So we can give them guidance at that point. But obviously, the earlier they do what, the earlier we can get out there and say, hey, we take a couple of snapshots, you know, there's a storm there behind that, you know, cul-de-sac, you know, there's a brook there, we couldn't put, we couldn't put cement back there. Whatever the...
So we come out of the requirement, so we have to put some conditions on that.
Yeah, we should comply with your regulations.
Right.
Sounds good.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your input, and we'll get to...
Yeah, I can go back and watch my Monday Night Football.
You owe me a time.
You owe me a time, I appreciate it. Can I talk to you about my nail gun stuff?
Six point two.
Okay, so, so Elizabeth will work on that, and I'll hope, like I said, we'll just move it to something. Elizabeth, what I'm gonna do is, why don't you make a side note to Willard, at Meadow, Meadowlands?
Meadowlands?
And, yeah, I know it's not in the subdivision regulations, but why don't you just send them...
We'll tell them.
As a friendly note, and that we're doing, and we'd appreciate it if they could work into their drawings.
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, might as well catch that one now. Okay?
It doesn't have to be, the regs is gonna safeguard us for the future, but there's nothing that says we can't write them a letter to, as a courtesy.
Exactly, this is a friendly, if they want to go off and put up regular mailboxes, we can't do anything about that. They've got to deal with the post office, but if they would work with the post office, we would appreciate it.
But contact the post office, you know, so...
Okay?
And I'll copy the postmaster, so that it's kind of like an affirmation that they're being watched.
Six point two.
I don't think so.
Some of the states.
Okay, there's a legal memo, we were gonna, thinking about going into executive session for this, but there's a legal memo that came in from Carol. I call it a legal memo because she's an attorney, but it's not our fiscal counsel advising us on how to handle the matter. So I suggest everybody read that before we say anything, because...
Yep.
Has everybody read the letter from KP Law?
And Carol's.
And the, the letter from KP Law is confidential, it hasn't been released, just so everybody knows.
So we're gonna have to do a couple of things first. If we don't, we're not gonna go into executive session, and I wasn't sure this afternoon. I said I would have very check with Carol and, and so...
Let's just continue that.
That we, well, we have to, we have to make a vote.
We have to hold a hearing.
Oh, well, yeah, we have to.
Okay, and, and they've requested, what are they...
You're here for...
No, I'm not here just to observe.
Okay.
Just to observe.
Do I have to leave? No, no.
No, we don't, we don't want to hold you up.
Very well.
We're not, we're not going into...
Okay, tell me when to leave, I'll leave.
No, no, we're good, we're good, we're good.
No, we're doing good. As far as, they came in, but nothing, nothing formal, they haven't, they just had told us that they were gonna go forward, they were gonna start their, their subdivision again, right?
Summit?
They have verbally stated that.
Verbal stated that.
And they have, and the email stated that they would like to...
Okay.
Didn't they expire though?
Subdivisions don't expire, the state law is silent on it, and there's nothing in our regs that says they expire. But the legal memo outlines, which I'm not gonna talk about because it's confidential. If the board wants me to release the memo, I can do that, but I'm gonna leave that up to you.
Well, that's why I was, my discussion was, is on, why I wanted to go, we could discuss it openly in an executive session. Because it's an illegal ease, a legal, legal situation that we're in. But the basic synopsis, which I could do, is that the subdivision, there are several things in the subdivision regulations. The state is not clear. But on our subdivision, we say two years, and then we can give them a two-year extension. That's it, our subdivision regulations, okay, which is set by this board, not by the city council, by this board. Needless to say, 20 years is a lot more than two years or a two-year extension, first part. The second part is that, in reading some of the stuff in there, is that we have never received, before they commence construction, before they commence construction, they're supposed to give us a covenant, over bond.
Yes.
And typically, a covenant is, if you've got, I'll just, I think it was 24 lots, they get 24 lots, they give us a covenant, or 24 lots. They, that means we hold a deed on the 24 lots. Then there, then as they say, okay, I got the base court in, we've done all the sewers, and the DPW said, yeah, we agree with the sewer. We agree with the electric, when everything that's all done, we start releases all, we release lot two, lot five, lot. As they sold the lots, release, until we get to last two, three, four. Because the value of lots about $100,000, we'll say, okay, now that's enough to cover anything that has to be done. At that point, we'd say, okay, I gotta have a bond. The bond would be to cover sidewalks, the final coat, and any other things that have to be done. And it might be 30, 40, 50, it could be $100,000, and then we hold the bond. When it's completed, and as built is done, then we can release the bond, and they go to the, the project is done, they go to the city council, and they get the street approved. That's the synopsis. None of that happened. Okay? They didn't do it in two years. They didn't, they built, they did some work, I don't know how much. I can't drive in there, I got a four-wheel drive truck, and I can't get in there, okay? They didn't come for an extension, we did not get a covenant, and we didn't get a warrant. So for all those reasons, we do not, you know, as far as I'm concerned, this is where we stand. That the individuals requesting this change, they're gonna have to start from square one again. So they're gonna come back, and we'll schedule a meeting with them. At that meeting, we will so inform them of that situation. Because they come in for the request, I, just to be honest with them, I'm gonna send them my copy. I'd like to release this.
Okay.
This document, okay? And, and, and then, yeah. I believe we can.
We can release it, it's, I just, it's under my name, so I have to sign off on it, but I was gonna say, whatever the board advises, I will do.
And that's the discussion that we'll have now, is whether we want to release this or not. And at that point, we'll say, okay, this is what we found, release it now. They may get it, and they say, okay, we got that, we don't have, we can't, we're gonna start from scratch. They can basically take the same drawing that they submitted to us before and resubmit it. But now there's new requirements, there's new water requirements, and there are some new subdivision regulations. What's that?
Most of the water is already put in.
That's what he says, but I don't know.
But John, I'm just reading Carol's memo, she says we can't disclose the memo, so.
I didn't see Carol's memo.
So you're talking about.
Carol's email?
Yeah, you should read that before.
I thought we just talked about that.
You were ahead of on the table when we came in.
Oh, I missed that one.
Read that before you continue. She's suggesting a different camp than you are.
Okay. Oh, I didn't see it, I'm sorry, I missed that. I got some paper here.
I gave you a lot of paper, I overloaded you.
Just read that real quick.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So I would suggest we do what she suggests, we gather this information, we schedule a public hearing, and then we can present.
Do we want to schedule the public hearing?
I would schedule it now, assuming we think we can get this information between now and whenever we schedule it.
And we have to notice, notify it, right? That we have to put a notice in the paper?
A public meeting or a public hearing?
Hearing, she said.
Public hearing. So why don't we do.
Yeah, it's a subdivision, we public hearing.
Why don't we do the second, second.
October 21st.
How long we gonna take together this information that she wants?
Yeah.
We identify the butters of the subdivision.
Who's identifying which.
Well, who.
Which lots, if any, have been sold or mortgaged.
Well, you have to notice.
I don't think anything has been sold.
Well, we don't know.
We don't know, that's the thing, and that's what we do.
We have to do all of that research.
Yeah.
If I may, who will pay for all that? Who's gonna pay and notify all of it? Is it coming out of our budget?
Probably should come out of.
There is no bond from the developer.
We have nothing to hold them.
I can collect escrow money, I can do that.
If he comes back, then he probably has to put up.
He would, yeah.
Yeah, he would have to, he would have to pay in advance for a new.
So who do you contact, right?
Yeah, so I would contact the developer, and say, we're gonna, we're gonna have a public hearing to determine whether or not to rescind or modify the approval. And therefore, we request you come and notify.
Well, you know, we require that you provide.
Oh, no, it's gonna.
Provide his funds.
It's part of the process.
Yeah.
You waited the 20 years, so you have to, yeah, true.
I'm gonna do that at the public hearing.
Okay, so I can get in a butters list, and then I can request that, we can do it how we do applications. I can request that the Mr. Exeris provide us with envelopes and with postage on them.
That's good.
And then there's the fee for the newspaper.
Well, do we want to wait till we have the public hearing?
What if he doesn't agree?
Well, you have to hear it.
No, see, at the public hearing, we have to. See, that's why I was asking, a public meeting, public hearing, public meeting, we don't have to advertise.
That's right.
Public hearing, we have to advertise.
She said hearing, and she.
She said hearing, yeah.
Precise with her words.
Yeah, 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 no, I agree, I agree, that's, that's, no, I, no, I get with her. Okay, so, so he's gonna, we, the first thing is that, I'll put this in a form of a motion. Motion will be in order, that we be, have a public hearing, okay? And that the applicant, okay, would be, the applicant or the developer, okay, would be required to pay for notification.
And I'll use the wording.
Well, notification includes all the mail, and the newspaper, and all the rest.
I'll use the wording that Carol did in the motion, if I could, that we schedule a public hearing to consider modification, amendment, or rescission to the summit estates.
Yeah, but I would get, get the pot, and then, you know, the heat to pay for it.
But you have to give the reason for the wording, so I'll make sure we get that in.
And what different regulations are we talking about, as far as roadway or?
Well, what's happened is, it would be modification most likely, because, may not be road, I don't remember the total project, okay? But I know what we have done, is we've done a lot more on the water, on drainages.
You're gonna have to centralize postal.
Yeah, you would probably have, you would have to centralize postal. But, you know, there was a lot of changes to do with water quality and that stuff in the last 20 years.
Why don't we follow that?
So the motion. Well, yeah, yeah, we're gonna discuss that at the public hearing.
That would be discussed at the public.
So we don't have to put that in the motion?
So the motion is that we hold a public hearing to consider modification, amendment, or rescission of the summit estates.
At the cost of the.
Period. We command or we.
We don't command.
Require the developer to appear, the developer's representative to appear, and to provide notification to a butters prior to the.
Or to provide funding so that we can, or we can provide funding.
Right, right.
Give us something to that effect.
So do you want to aim for, I think November 4th might be a more.
Yeah. Yeah, let's do that.
Realistic date, because I've got to get the butters list.
We wait 20 years, we can wait another, that's right. I think that's not a problem.
November 4th, 6:30?
Well, my first motion's paused, okay?
Yeah.
Motion by Paul, second by Fred?
Sure.
Okay, any, any further discussion on that? Don't say, say aye, 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 the votes say no? Okay, on the date and time?
Again, November 4th, at 6:30.
November 4th at 6:30. Okay?
It's a party, right?
Any further discussion on that? Here and now, the vote for the vote, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
That would be carried.
Okay, I'll call Mr. Exeris tomorrow, and then I'll help him writing.
I'm gonna just.
Yeah. Okay. There's good zoning amendments.
Do we want to do that without Carol?
Why don't we take.
And the list is growing, I solicited other departments for input as to what zoning amendments they might suggest. And so far, I've heard back from building, I've heard back from economic development. And then there are some from the floodplain administrator, that there are kind of federal requirements that we should put into our, our regulations to be in compliance with FEMA.
Okay.
So those, that, that was all in your packet, but we can, we can have a.
Put that folder together, create that folder, when we look at, some of those things, like the building coordinator, the development coordinator had talked to me about this. These small houses, okay? Ooh, that's, that's, that, that could be a whole another ball of wax, and lo and behold, I've been working on it. Because down in Florida, okay, we're doing that, we have a small houses, okay? And some of the requirements that they have, and some of the things that come into play there. So some of that information, it's applicable, and some of it's not, and it's a whole new, you know, how do we do this, okay? Because there's been, it's not mobile homes, okay, because the people have been years ago dead set against that.
That's where they go.
Oh, yeah, but you now have, the businesses of manufactured homes have changed considerably. In fact, there's a house, just not far from me, that came in seven trailers. It's a three-story house, and it came as a modular home, in six different, seven different pieces that they put together, it was amazing. They did it in like three days, when it became great.
It's built better than anything.
We'll discuss this in a few.
Yeah, we can discuss.
But that's, that's another, and that might be another, that's gonna, you know, that's another whole ball of wax that we'll look at, so. As we open these things up, we look at, so I think what we're, at the same time, I want people to, want people to know that we're doing this, and if they have any requests, there are people out there, that they can forward this to.
6.5.
Yeah, I don't.
6.4 we're saving, 6.5.
6.5, forward.
Tiny houses.
Fall intern.
So we have advertised for a fall intern, and I've been told that the main people that would be interns have graduated. And there are a part where they have beginning students that aren't at the interns' fifth level stage yet. So maybe by the spring, we'll have somebody, but for the fall, we're stuck without.
Timing is hard, too, you really want to look for fall interns when they're registering for classes in April, you want to look for spring interns in October.
So we're gonna look for our spring intern ahead of time.
Yeah. So if you wait till January, most everybody's committed at that point to something.
Yeah.
So mid-October is really the.
So really, we're looking for a spring.
So in a couple of weeks, we'll advertise for our spring.
And it'll be mid-April for your fall.
Because spring really starts right after January.
We'll be planning a development director's report for September.
You got your reports with all your applications, loads of them?
Yep, looks very good.
It's good. Well, he's gonna say no in executive session first.
No, executive, yeah.
Motion torture.
Well, that's right. I was here.
Have a motion made in second. On the favor, say aye. Aye, will say no, motion carries.